We presented for the first time the Action Framework, as well as the Equity Resolution, which we're really excited to share with you all today. If you weren't able to participate and watch the July State Board meeting. And then lastly, share out in some of the unique community partnerships that we form, anywhere from the student groups and some of the larger ed advocacy groups across the state. And then share with you our next steps and we'll end with. This is a great picture. This is actually a presentation that was honoring one of our great educators across the state, this particularly from Edington, Chawan. And these are our board members. And as you can see, we have board representation from each one of the regions of our state. And then also some at-large members. So this is the current North Carolina State Board of Education membership. And as you can see, led by our chairman Eric Davis and vice chairman Alan Duncan. And then our regional representatives, as well as our at-large members. And then our ex-officio representatives and lieutenant governor Dan Forrest, state treasurer Dell Falwell, and then the ex-officio secretary superintendent Mark Johnson. So that just gives you a brief introduction to our board. And then Dr. Townsend Smith is now going to kind of share you with you the historical context of the board as the strategic initially, and then kind of the evolution of that plan. So I hand it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McKinney. So you might be wondering like, why is the state board living in this space of like strategic planning, et cetera? And I think that, oh, I started this position about two and a half years ago with the State Board of Ed. And I think every day that I have the privilege to be in this role, I am, I think I'm more humbled every day thinking about the responsibility of the board and its constitutional responsibilities. What I'm, what I'm humbled by is that, you know, in North Carolina, we have a constitution for education. And it clearly states that, you know, the people have a privilege and a right to, to education. And it is our responsibility to ensure that happens. And so with that in mind, I think that the board has embraced that piece and is truly setting the direction for the state, not only because of the Leandro mandates that have come out, but just because it is the right thing to do. And I think it has worked diligently to set out those priorities. And so in June of 2018, we started on this quest. And then we had the privilege and the honor of having student advisors rejoin our board. The pictures in the, in the upper right-hand corner, you see two seniors that made an appeal to the board to say, okay, you guys are embarking on this work, but you're, you're forgetting one of its critical stakeholders. And so, and students have been absent from the table for some two years as the responsibility to appoint these advisors moved from the governor's office to the superintendent's office. And so after that appeal, the picture in the lower right-hand corner is where you see student voice begin to take shape at the table again. But we've worked diligently to expand that as, as we, as we went about this work. So as we look at the board's work, in 2012, the board set a belief statement. And that belief statement hadn't been revised for some time. And so when I took on, on the, on this position in 2018, I challenged the board to say, we're, we always update our strategic plan every year. And you say that this is your belief statement and you say that, that these are your mission and vision statements, but these things aren't aligned. And so their push to me was that if you're saying that these things aren't aligned, what are you going to do to get us there so that we can begin to, to make the appropriate progress? And so we had a strategic plan that had a variety of goals. So, and what I realized is that it was trying to measure too many things, too many things. We had six goals that were, that were in the plan with a variety of supporting objectives, which was in my mind, and as I like to say, hashtag too much. When you try to, when you try to keep track of too many things, you're just, you're just doing things or putting things on the paper for the sake of putting them on the paper. You can go to the, to the next couple of slides, Mr. McKinney. Let's go to the alignment slide.
And Dr. Townsend, just one minute. I just wanted, we had a request in the chat to turn on the captions. And so, Mr. McKinney, I don't know if you're able to turn that on, on your end, but I know that those closed captions are sometimes helpful. And if you're in a PowerPoint presentation, you should have that option at the bottom of your screen. If not, we can keep on working on that. I don't want to, I just wanted to see if we were able to get those going.
And so I pushed the board and I said, okay, so our responsibilities for, for this work and how we're going to get, get us there is that we're going to align and, and decide what, what are going to be those most important things and what are our true priorities? And so when we looked at the alignment work, I started to look at the things that they were discussing at the board table. I started listening to what they kept saying were the most important things and then realizing that those things weren't reflected in their current, current strategic plan. And so that led us on this quest of engaging in conversations, me bringing people to the table to engage in these conversations with the board to help us come up with goals and objectives to form where we were going to take this piece. And so as we decided, ultimately, we created a timeline and we just launched a plan. And it's been a part of my responsibility to keep us on target. And so a part of my work entails, entails creating the board's agenda each month and then ensuring that they have planning and work sessions each year. And there are two work sessions that they engage in each year where typically we meet two days. When we have a planning and work session, we meet three days. And on those, on those planning and work sessions, I try to make sure that all those presentations are geared around what we said were the most important things. And when we went about this work, we said that, okay, equity and whole child are guiding principles. Those things have never been done in the board's strategic plans before. They never had guiding principles. And so we, we set about on that path. And then we took those guiding principles and the guiding principles became that foundation that helped shape the goals, the objectives, the vision and the mission statement. And so in August of 2019, we, we approved our new vision statement, which now reads that every public school student in North Carolina will be empowered to accept academic challenges prepared to pursue their chosen path after graduating high school and encouraged to become lifelong burners with the capacity to engage in a globally collaborative society. And the mission is now just very basic, meaning that the board is going to use its constitutional authority to guard and maintain the right of every child to receive a sound, basic education. And we can't do that, we can't do that unless those things are grounded in equity and whole child. And you can't do one without the other. And I think that for some time, we tried to shy away from the, from the response, responsibility to face that, okay, where we're doing all these pieces around whole child, but we weren't addressing the biggest elephant in the room, which was equity. And if you don't, if you do one without the other, you're not meeting the needs of the, of the whole child. You'll see before you hear that these, this is the definition that we adopted for, for whole child. This work started before we, before we, we went on the path of our new strategic plan. But what I found, found with the whole child work is that we had a resolution for the work. We had a definition for the work. It kept us grounded. It kept us focused. With equity, we struggled for, for a while to get there in that we had to have those intentional conversations about what did it mean? What did it look like? We engaged in conversations on the campus of North Carolina Central University, where we talked, we talked about equity and what it means, the historical pieces. We had a presentation from, from, I just blinked on the name of the group. We, we had, we engaged in a presentation and board members went through the piece of, of the groundwater presentation with, Free Bird, help me out. What was the group? Are you there, Free Bird?
RTI, RTI.
It wasn't RTI. I'll, I'll remember and I'll, I'll, I'll send it back. I'll, I'll put it in the chat for the group as well. So we, we engaged in those intentional conversations, REI. Yes. Thank you.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you. Racial Equity Institute and they.
That's what I meant, sorry.
And, and the board began to really understand like what was happening. And I think that as we looked at Leandro, we were, we were then struggling with this Leandro piece and struggling with like the whole child piece and saying like, we've been doing all these things for, for some time, but we haven't made the progress that we know that we need to make for our state. And so I stood before them and said, we, we don't have an achievement issue. We have a, we have an equity issue. And until we, until we are willing to be, be bold and embrace that, we're going to, we're going to stay in the same space every day. And so I was, I was pleased to note, see that in 2018, they, we finally adopted a definition of educational equity for our state. And then later in this presentation, you're going to see where we are ending with, with our resolution. The work continued for us November of last year. So we have planning sessions, as I said earlier, two times a year. We have one in the spring and then we have one in the fall. And then the one in the fall, I always try to have it on the campus of an EPP, Educated Preparation Program. So because the board approves those, those spaces. And so that's our opportunity to engage with our community partner. And then we also have one in the spring where we just keep it at our Raleigh location where we typically meet. And so when we are developing these planning and work sessions, we, we're always going at it with the frame of a theme. And the one in the fall was themed eliminating opportunity gaps. And you can't eliminate opportunity gaps unless you are addressing equity in the room. So we, we were intentional about having it on the campus of a historically, historically black college and college and university because they had an approved EPP program. And so we engaged with our partners at North Carolina A&amp;T, who provided space and feedback to us on the work that we are embarking on in our strategic plan. The session opened with, you know, the chancellor giving welcoming remarks and pushing the board to stay focused on the most important thing, which is equity. And which was followed by one of my favorites in this space is Dr. Jim Johnson from, from UNC Chapel Hill. And so he laid an additional layer to the work that we've been exposed to at REI. And so, and it's so relevant today. And this has helped us so much in our conversations when we're talking about the Browning of America, et cetera. And Dr. Johnson is the best at laying that groundwork. So, you know, as you go about doing your work, I push you to engage those partners that can sometimes deliver the message because what I've found, like while I'm passionate about this work, sometimes I have to step back and not be the messenger. I have to be the facilitator, like creating those spaces for people to engage in those courageous conversations. The other piece that happened at our planning and work session is that we, we continue to lift up student perspective. And we had in our strategic plan that we were interested in improving, improving the climate in our schools and classrooms. One way to go about that, when we know that those things can't happen unless students are fed each and every day. And during that time, we partnered with Julie Pittman, who is a Regional Teacher of the Year, but she's also from Rutherford County Schools. And one of her students who talked to the board about, about the importance of innovative meal plans in schools and, and why that was important and why we should continue to do that work. And following that presentation, the board adopted, adopted a resolution to continue this work. And the piece that was critical at this, at this planning and work session is that I've left metrics off of the, like I have goals and we have goals and objectives in our plan, but we want partners to help inform the true metrics and how that shapes out. And so this student, as well as, as Julie, who was there present with us, proposed how we should truly be measuring the impact of meals and, and what they do for students each and every day and why, why, why every school should have some type of innovative meal plan in the classroom. And so we've been able to like create like individual MOUs with a variety of different districts. And that work has just taken on another life of itself because it is important and it's the right thing to do. And so students matter, students' voice matter. And I've learned to appreciate that even more in this space as we go about this work. Free Bird, you want to pick up with the, the next presentation that we had in November, which was the Pathways of Prosperity?
Sorry, I was on mute. Another piece of the planning and working sessions that's so important is the community partnerships that we showcase and highlight at, at these meetings. Here you will see Alamance Achieves, which is a community organization that's actually led by former North Carolina State. And I know it's probably similar to what many of us understand as an equity wall. As you can see here, there was a group of us that were represented students. And you can barely see, but there were dots along the floor. So we really spread it out across the room. And Alamance Achieves and their staff led us through a walk of the vital importance of particular decisions, but also educational initiatives through certain, okay, then we looked at K through three literacy. Then we looked at the importance of reading. Then we looked at the importance of middle school, up to high school, career development on into post-secondary achievement. So we kind of walked through this pathway to prosperity. And each of the ones that had a sign represented the student and everyone in the audience were making particular decisions. So this was a very impactful process because we really got to see, and almost if you remember the game of life when you were growing up, how particular decisions by organizations affected individual child's pathways to prosperity. And I think this is what's, we go back if we're looking at the, the priorities with the whole child. We made a committed effort by the board to change the language that we use from all simple but very impactful change because in our decision-making process and in the way that we bring in different groups to represent who represents our students across this state, we need to focus on that each and every. And I saw there was a question in the chat just recently that asked, you know, how do we represent different students of, of color, of ethnic groups, of language groups? And we're going to speak to that a little bit. And one of the most recent presentations that we had as the board was considering social studies and, and we brought in a particular group participated in a class called Teaching Hard History. So we're going to bring that up, but I wanted to just kind of focus on, on that particular question there of the State Board of Education Strategic Planning Committee. And it is made of both members, Mr. James Ford and Ms. Jill Camnitz, as well as board staff and advisors, and as well as research assistants and associates. And together, this group created what we're going to now look at as the strategic plan to do, and it's great, is incorporating and really listening and putting into action the advisors' voices, comments and suggestions. Sorry?
Can I, can I jump in here a little bit?
Yes.
So this, so to keep us focused on our work, we are divided in committees. We've never had a strategic planning committee. And I think what helped us, helped to push us to move to this format to help keep us focused and to ensure that all of our work, anything that comes before the board is centered around the strategic plan, is that we also engage with a national organization that focused on equity as well outside of REI. We engaged in a lead cohort with the board's partner in NASBI, which is the National Association of State Boards of Ed. And so we found other partners in this work and we saw what they were doing. And so it was an opportunity for us to make some shifts on our end by engaging with other boards of ed who were doing this work to help inform our direction as we move forward. Thank you, Free Bird.
Oh, my gosh, yes. So we're going to briefly walk through the strategic plan. In, in bold, you will see lineup with each one of our three goals. And then underneath you will see specific components that further address the objective. So our first goal was to eliminate opportunity gaps by 2025. And I believe that the phrase opportunity gaps has gotten a lot of mileage. And so what we wanted to do was to really spell out exactly what we were trying to address in those opportunity gaps. And our objective one, you can see that this is the exclusionary discipline practices, particular suspensions and expulsions. And objective two, to improve school climate measures. And what we really wanted to do is we wanted to look at how could we increase school-based mental health professionals? How could we increase the opportunities to develop healthy habits? So again, going back to the partnership we have with DPI and the School Child Nutrition, as well as Share Our Strength and No Kid Hungry. That's a particular, particular partnership that helps to develop that. And then also increase the number of schools and districts utilizing those innovative breakfast after, summer meals and at-risk after-school meal programs. Objective three was to increase percentage of 40-year-old children enrolled in state pre-K. So another, how do we eliminate opportunity gaps? We feel like the pre-K piece is, is very important in our performance. So what may improvement in school and district performance? And you can see here, there are eight objectives. We're looking at reallocating financial and business and technological resources, looking at increasing the percentage of grades three through eight in math and ELA, EOG subgroup test scores, as well as meeting the ESU requirements, increasing percentage of students proficient in math by subgroup, proficiency in reading by the end of third grade, percentage of high school reading group test scores, increasing the percentage of students proficient in science, increasing number of schools meeting or. My measure, if we could please mute if, if we're not asking a specific question, that would be great. Thank you. And then an objective eight, increasing the number of charter schools meeting or exceeding academic, operational and financial goals. Goal three was to increase educator preparedness to meet the needs of every student by 2025. And there are four objectives here. So increasing the number of culturally relevant, equity-focused resources for educators, increasing the number of mentors. One of the initiatives and another reason why we feel very strongly about developing further partnerships is how, how can we begin to build out a stronger mentorship program that focuses asset mapping within our individual communities, but also across our state for our beginning educators and also our BT twos and threes? Objective three, strengthen relationships between education preparation programs. And then objective four, how can we increase opportunities for educator engagement inside and outside the school? So further developing those community partnerships. You want to focus on this, Dr. Towns?
Sure. So as I communicated earlier, for the board now, equity is a priority. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to hear the board meeting following the unfortunate death of George Floyd. But I fully feel that had we not been on this journey and on this walk, like prior to, to any of those events, we, the board would not have, have responded as, as it did following those events. And quite frankly, personally, I want to use, use this as an opportunity to push forward what we know to be the best thing for students. Because when we focus on equity for our marginalized groups, it benefits everyone. And so what you see before you hear is the definition for equity that the, the board has adopted for the state. And what we want to push every board of ed in our state to begin the alignment process to start addressing these issues. And so our, the definition that is developed for educational equity is that it's the belief or practice of ensuring that every student is treated in a fair and just manner, providing the necessary allocation of resources for the success of every student and eliminating discriminatory barriers to full participation and opportunities for every student. What I feel, we fell short in this definition. And I still have conversations with board members to this day. And I'm hoping we'll get an opportunity to go back and change some of that definition. It's that we didn't call out the specific groups here. But what, because like, I have to call it out in order to. Is my glow, hold on, not a turn. Okay, is my glow still?
If we could please mute our, our microphones if we're not asking a question.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Wait, oh, I can't cut. All right. Can everyone still hear me? Can you hear me, Free Bird?
I can.
Okay. And so like, that's where I want to, because when we pass the strategic plan that has this approved definition and our approved goals, we committed that we would make changes based on feedback, input, et cetera. And we are beginning to, we are beginning to, to make that path. So at that. At that November planning and work session, to continue this work, so we had this plan. It had passed in August of 2019. And, um. The chair charged us at that November meeting. Okay, we have this plan, but. Is there's, there's no true action being taken behind it. Why are you going to do to make this, uh, plan actionable? Um, we continue to engage in like a variety of different, um, presentations, et cetera. But where we, where we've arrived to right now is the production of an action framework where we engage in some intentional conversations. With, with a variety of stakeholders, and this is a broad, uh, piece of stakeholders that we engage in a variety of meetings. Um, offline, and that was the beauty of this Zoom space that we have now. Uh, it allowed us to meet a little bit more regularly with, um, with some of our stakeholders to. Begin to shape out how we were going to make this plan actionable and what were those key things? That we needed to focus on as it related as well to those pieces that we had, we had committed to. To the course in, in our Leandro plan. So what you see here is a link. Um, to a framework, an action framework, um, that we have created to. Begin to put these things into action. And then also for these partners to help us truly shape out the true metrics of what. Uh, we will be measuring as we move forward. The next step we're going to take as well is. The process of developing a, uh, a data dashboard so that we can truly track this in real time. Because you know, as with most plans, ours is now online where it, it has never been there before. However, now it is online. It is a live and breathing document. But when you don't track it consistently with some true data analytics to inform. Um, policy decisions and actions, then, um, then we don't, we don't make the progress that we want to make. So. Um, for the creation of the, um, action framework and the resolution. Um, based on those discussions, um, the same group, um. Which is the Strategic Planning Committee, along with, uh, a variety of other. Partners, we were able to come up with the action framework.
And as you can see, and I know we're, we're, um, we want to make sure that we give plenty of time for Dr. Townsend Smith and I to, uh, answer questions at the end. So we did put a link and I will post this presentation at the very, uh, end. So you will be able to click on the action framework piece. Um, but I wanted to walk through very briefly just some of the examples as this team that. Uh, Dr. Townsend Smith, uh, previously referenced. You know, what are some of the actionable goals that we're looking at in goal one? Um, and so some of those are to, you know, disallow the use of exclusionary discipline in early grades. Utilizing restorative practices and transformative SEL, grounded in equity and social justice. So. That one's speaking to the exclusionary discipline practices. If we're looking at how can we improve the school climate measures? Um, we want to make sure that we're really pushing to provide each grade with a dedicated mental health professional. Increase that ratio of the mental health professionals to our student ratios. To require that we do have mental health and SEL education in all of our grades, to adopt health, um, instruction standards. And again, to increase that innovative food distribution method, which. Uh, we know is going to be even more important as, as we move into the reopening and, um. Uh, strategies of our districts as we make sure that we're feeding our kids and continuing that process that was from the spring into the summer. Objective three, we're looking at expanding and marketing pre-K, particularly in underserved communities. Uh, as Dr. Townsend Smith mentioned, publishing meaningful equity data. Uh, through the, uh, State Board Data Board. And providing information to parents and, and recommended attendance screening and qualifications for that North Carolina pre-K. Some other, uh, if we move down maybe to objective six. Uh, how are we increasing the number of educators of colors in our schools? This is particularly a piece that Dr. Townsend Smith is also involved in as being a member. Of the Governor Cooper's task, job task force. We're looking at eliminating challenges and barriers by underwriting the cost of teacher preparation. Funding alternative pathways, adjusting LEA hiring and retention practices. Investing, uh, more in HBCUs to widen the, the pipeline of educators of color. Uh, and also looking at state data systems in meaningful ways. Um, if we move down to seven, uh, again, annual equity audits in inventories for schools and districts in, in charter schools. Uh, a teacher working condition survey, part of participation and really using that, uh. Much more as a, a meaningful and engaging tool. And also transparency on financial status of, of the nonprofit boards that are governing charter schools. And lastly, if we're looking at goal three. Um, excuse me, goal two, improving school and district performance. Somebody, uh, I believe it was at R. Bradford mentioned universal broadband access. Uh, particularly as we move into again reentry, this is something the board has been. Um, very interested in and engaged in conversations. Not only from House Bill 1043 and House Bill 1023. But also, uh, bills that are, that are working in the House and the Senate right now that are addressing, uh, broadband access, particular connectivity. In our, uh, in our regions that have had difficulty over the years. Um, if we move down into objective six, increasing the percentage of students in science. Uh, there's been some great initiatives, one particular by our, our, one of our board advisors, Mariah Morris. And increasing computer science access and, um, and, and, uh, girls involved in computer. Science across our state. If you go down to objective eight, uh, again, increasing charter school, uh, standards for quality school authorization process. So. As we walk through the action frame. Time to update, to create new ways to put these objectives into something, um, that we can focus on and work for. Uh, and. At underlining concern and focus has been. Our Leandro off to the side in green. There's also links to, to those Leandro, uh, needs that we're having, particularly those, those seven book buckets that we're constantly coming back to. And, and synthesizing with the strategic plan and the action framework. I'll let you, uh, talk about this one. Very proud of this.
Um, so. Anybody that knows anything about, uh. It will, when you get to, to, to know, uh, me and this work, you know that it's a true passion and I, I fully feel that. Plans are good. But plan, plans need commitment. And they need action, right? And so. In order to do that, in order to make them live and breathe in, in order to truly make sure that we realize what we are committing to. I think, um. I think it's important to commit to, to what we're going to do. And so, um, the board, um. Embraced, uh, an equity resolution is, is out for, it's a draft version. Um, that is before, before you nail. Um, and I encourage anyone that is participating here today. To give us feedback on, on, on the plan, on the, on, on the, uh, action framework and, and on the resolution. And if we missed anything, we're, we're open to, um, we are open to, to those pushes. Uh, because with partnership, that's where we get it right. Um, if you read the, the West Air report that calls out the pieces in Leandro. When we are most successful. It said, we need, we, we need partnership, but I think where Leandro missed the mark is that it didn't call out this equity issue that we've been. We, we've been battling for, for so long. I'm not going to read the entire resolution to you, but just some of the pieces that. That resonate, uh, with me as I read this. Um, and then, and I'll, I'll read a few of the whereas's and I'll read what we are resolving to, um, as a state board. This resolution begins with, whereas the North Carolina State Board of Education values the over 1.5 million public school children. In its trust as the state's most precious resources, guarded by the North Carolina Constitution. Which declares that the people have a right to the privilege of education. And that is, it is the duty of the state to guard and maintain that right with Article Nine specifically detailing. Our legal obligation to ensure equity, demanding equal opportunities shall be provided for all students. When I, when I read that. Um, the Constitution called it out. And as a state, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't, and we haven't fully embraced that. Um, and so like. That piece stood out, stood out to me, um, for sure. Um, another whereas that stood out to me is this piece, whereas in 2019, the board adopted. The Equity of Whole Child as the guiding principles for the strategic plan for the state. As essential to ensure the needs of every child on that. Defining educational equity for our state as the belief and practice of ensuring that every child is treated in a fair and just manner. Providing the necessary allocation of resources. That includes that broadband that we were talking about earlier for the success of every student and eliminating discriminatory barriers to full participation and opportunities for every student. Um. This piece where the last whereas, uh, sticks out to me as well, whereas an equity framework helps to respond to social and health pandemics. As well as natural disasters necessitating that all local education agencies. Commit to engaging in equitable practices. Under the federally approved North Carolina Equity Plan and the State Board of Education Policy and Strategic Plan. And we resolve to do these things. That the state board embraces equity as a framework to have the greatest impact on student academic success. Grounded in appropriate supports for students' social and emotional learning and wellbeing. That the board will ensure culturally affirming environments by urging districts to change their racist names of schools, ensure that students see themselves reflected in the curriculum. And to segregate schools when, wherever possible to create. Uh, intergroup contact with different racial and ethnic populations. Um, that the board encourages public school units to align their strategic plan goals to, to the broad goals of the board. Um. And to start using equity as a framework to create collaborative school-community relationships to improve student learning, to meet the constitutional mandate. And resolve that the board members, um, will, we, we're going to do, we're going to do this work and we're going to continue to do this work. Um. I am humbled that student voice informs this process and that, and that we get to live in this space and that they inform, form this work. Teacher voice is also important for us as we, we go about this work. We can't do this work without you. You are an important partner. And as you go about your work, remember it takes, yes, it takes planning because we have to put it down on paper. Ultimately, um, we, we need to commit to something. And once we commit, we act regardless of the pressure that is around us. Thank you.
A walk through the last couple of slides. These are going to be, uh, resources that we would love for you all to take a look at. Uh, that will be embedded into the presentation. This is the press release for the, from the State Board on the call to action to eliminate inequities and racism. This was also an article from NC Policy Watch, uh, which is a project of the North Carolina Justice Center. That, uh, discusses, um, the State Board's vow to tackle racial disparities in the new five-year plan. And then this is, uh, a, um, an article from the News and Observer about how the State Board. Delayed the social study, uh, standard. And this was, uh, in conjunction with county public schools and Middle Creek High School students. And, uh, their educator and teacher, Matt Sheldon, who teaches a class called Teaching Hard History. Uh, and this group of students was able to present to the school board, again, in an example of that partnership and student voice. Um, we've included a, a link to a video that these students, uh, created in conjunction with the local NAACP. Um, and this is a picture of those students and, uh, their instructor, Matt in the far right and. A member of the, uh, local chapter of NAACP who was working with them on this project. So. Again, a great example, someone earlier asked about that student voice, about the diverse voices that the board does. And I feel like this was, in my humble opinion, one of the most powerful. Days of the state board because it really did encompass. Uh, so many different levels of stakeholder input from student voices. On a day when we were, um, when we were presenting the, uh, equity resolution to the public for the first time. Also wanted to include a link, uh, to, um, our board member, James Ford, and his most recent. Um, uh, Education Matters recording on Leandro. And the actions of the Strategic Plan Committee and moving from planning to action. This is a great piece that I think also encapsulates what Dr. Townsend and Smith and I have walked through. And kind of a historical narrative and a current narrative and, and planning with Leandro. Uh, to, to finalize this and move into the question-answer period, um, we, and Dr. Townsend Smith mentioned it, you know, we want to take. These next 10 minutes to really engage, uh, the staff, advisory boards, councils, committees. Community partners and organizations that are present on this call. Uh, to become more of a part of the, of the strategic plan. Um, again, Dr. Townsend Smith spends a lot of time and effort in planning out who presents. Particularly in the, uh, the two planning and working sessions. And this is a perfect opportunity for these organizations to be able to share. How their commitment and dedication in their own, uh, community organizations, but in a synthesis with what we shared with you today. And we encourage all of you to continue to help us. To A, check our mission statement and vision statements and the strategic plans and the action framework. But then also to, uh, to use this one hopefully as a model in building out your own mission statements. So that we can, from a statewide perspective, reflect what you are committed to at a district level and at a school level and vice versa. So we, we are, uh, definitely soliciting feedback and anywhere you feel like there are, are needed adjustments and pivots. Um, and we also want to continue to monitor and report progress at those board meetings. Uh, and also quarterly through the strategic plan, uh, presentations. Um, Dr. Townsend Smith, it's, it's been an honor to present with you and to continue working with you and, uh. I look forward to hear, um, our colleagues' comments and questions here, and I want to hand it off to you to end us.
So, um, thank you guys so, so much for this opportunity. Uh, Ms. McKinnon, you know that you are my partner in this work. I, I appreciate, um, this path that we are on. Um, I, I want to leave everybody with. Um, this work is hard, sometimes it's slow. But we have an opportunity and a moral responsibility. To make sure that we, um, meet the needs of every student. Um, I'm seeing the comments and pushes in the chat. Um. I thrive on feedback and, um, and responding to those things. Uh, I just saw one piece about parents, um, being an important and critical partner in this work. You are correct. We will, we will adjust and, and, and make that for sure, but we're open for, for questions right now. So Ms. Mangan. Um, whenever we're ready for that, we, we are good to go.
Great. Thank you all so much for all of your hard work that you're doing and it, it's great to hear. About the work and kind of how it's all coming together, especially with the resolution there. Um, a couple of questions that have come up. One is, um, is there any, you all mentioned giving feedback. Um, is there a specific way that you're taking feedback? Um, from educators and also kind of a note there too. Um, don't forget about including all staff, not just certified staff. So you might have seen that in the chat, but. Just wanted to put that out there. If there's a specific way you're taking feedback or.
Um, the first, the first time we put things out for feedback, we, we really put it out there and we put it out there on Twitter for people to provide. For to provide us feedback, but I, we are always accepting feedback through like our various, um, you know, email addresses. So you can reach out directly to board members, um, to myself. Um, and since we, we are the, I guess we, we shepherd that information to provide it to board members, et cetera. Um, when you send, uh, uh, information to my email address, we do respond appropriately and that. Uh, my email address is on the presentation.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Another question that came up, and I think you all addressed it a little bit, but I just want to make sure that we put it in here and bring it back up. You know, you all mentioned racial equity was bringing in those voices. How are you all trying to ensure that you're hearing other voices, including LBTGQ, as well as maybe special education and other underrepresented populations?
So that's, those are good questions. We have a variety of different councils across the state where we we tap, like we use agency staff to solicit that feedback that way. But these are, these are great pushes as we think about it. We have certain sections in the agency that are dedicated to helping us lift up those those pieces specifically around LGBTQ students, et cetera. And so we try to use all the partners that we have, like inside the agency and outside the agency, to help shepherd that our student voices, our students also will approach us directly to provide feedback. So I would like to have like some more sessions like we did as we adopted the action framework in the resolution where we had those smaller, smaller sessions and we were one-on-one in smaller groups. And I think based, Mr. Ford does chair the committee and he has committed to engaging in more of those type sessions. So we're hoping to continue that work for sure.
Great. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions that people have? I think that, I think another question that came up, and I think Free Bird, that you mentioned this a little bit, but maybe one more around, what is the State Board of Ed doing to help with broadband to create equity for all students?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. And it is absolutely part of the strategic plan. But I think probably a more focused question right now is if you look at, and I can also provide a link to the legislative update specifically, but this is one of the priorities that we entered into short session with. I think House Bill 1043 is a great example of the commitment to trying not only to broadband connectivity, but also device access. It is part of our current budget request. And then also, I also feel like another commitment was expressed in the CARES Act funding, the State Board of Education and DPI could pull back 10% of the 396 that was appropriated from the coronavirus relief fund. And about 25 million of that 10% was dedicated to more digital access, to connectivity, to resources. So particularly knowing that there was already a digital gap that was growing across our state, making sure that we are focusing on providing resources, providing professional development, and then literally in access to devices. That's been a focal point of the state board in our discussions with the General Assembly and in our partnership with DPI. Also, there was a joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee meeting that specifically was addressing broadband connectivity issues. And the board and DPI were heavily involved in those presentations and in constant conversations with developing legislation that addresses this. So it is absolutely one of our priorities currently. And so there's a real commitment to it and those kind of visible pieces there.
Great. Thank you so much. One more question is, how can parents become more involved in this work and having their voice heard as well?
That's a, that's a great question. We've, we've engaged in some conversations with some of our partners who have like tighter connections to like community and then, you know, community includes parents, et cetera. And so we've been strategizing around like how we we broaden the peace and the opportunities for for parents to get more involved in the work. On some of our smaller committees, there are parent, parent advisors, et cetera. We haven't had a space for a parent advisor on the board, but that is something to consider and something to think about to see like how we might go go about that. I know statute calls out for teacher advisors, student advisors, principal advisors, but it hasn't called out parent advisors. So just thinking about how we would go to go about doing that in our current construct or creating like a smaller advisory parent group that could could help in this space. So definitely open to that. Just got to figure out how to make it happen.
Wonderful.
Yeah, if I could speak on that really quickly, too. I absolutely think that that is a stakeholder group that we're working to try and develop a better relationship with. I'll be presenting at the PTA conference that was originally scheduled for the spring in August. And then also, we're trying to, from my position as Director of Community Outreach, and figure out where we do have some gaps with our stakeholder groups and where we can begin to develop those relationships strongly. And I believe that the parent is one of those pieces that we're working on collectively to do.
Thank you all both so much. And I don't know if you want, if you want to put up your contact information maybe one more time. I did, I apologize. The first link that went in was the link to the entire conference evaluation. I've put the corrected link in there. And so hopefully, everybody has that corrected link now.
And I can drop mine in the chat, too, Ms. Minkum.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And thank you both for this very important work. I know that it, the comments in the chat are very, people are very appreciative of you all sharing this information, but also of all of the hard work. And we appreciate you all taking the time today to join us. With that, we will stay on for a couple more minutes, but we will end the session because I know you have other sessions that you want to get to. I know we'll give a virtual round of applause. And thank you to Dr. Townsend Smith and Mr. McKinney for all of your work.
Thank you so much for all of your participation. And and again, we are honored to do this work for our students, our schools, and our families across this state. So please reach out.
Yes, thank you.
You had a few more on here than your normal board meetings, Deanna. 305.
Yes, I think we made it up to 315. So thank you all.
Thank you. This was a great opportunity.
And we will, we will share the session evaluation information with you because there might be some great comments or people that you would like to follow up with.
Yes, for sure. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
All right. We all have a great day.
If you, if you need the link to the presentation, I just shared it again. So if you needed to grab that real quick, I don't know if you're putting that anywhere else.
Yes, you know what? Jonathan, who will send out the certificate, I will ask him to send that for this, for this particular group. That'll be wonderful.
Yeah, we would love for people to take a look at the equity resolution and and be able to really kind of analyze the strategic plan a little bit more.
Okay. All right. I will send that to him now because he'll be sending out those later today.
Thank you.
All right.
Good work, Doc.
You too, sir.
Hey, Ms. T.
Oh, here, hold on. I'll unmute her. Oops. Let's see. All right, there you go. Now you can say hi to Ms.
Hey, Ms. T. Thank you for your questions.
There you go.
Hello.
You're unmuted.
How are you? I'm doing fine.
All right, I'm going to end the session so y'all can jump to others. I hope everybody has a great day.